Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 7th, Medfield School Committee meeting. We were in executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations and now we're out into the regular meeting. The agenda for tonight is approval of minutes. We have presentation from the high school student advisory council. We're gonna have a discussion on the school committee policy subcommittee. We're gonna talk about the high school jazz band out of state trip to Rhode Island. We are going to review the school committee subcommittee list and hear the superintendent's report to the committee and have public input and discuss some of the future agenda items. So with that, the first item of business is the June 17th, 2013 regular meeting, school committee minutes, so...
So I review the minutes for the June 17th, 2013 regular meeting and I recommend that they be approved as submitted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the next topic for the meeting is the high school student advisory council. So who's first up, Thomas?
Hello, I'm Thomas Cadman, the freshman rep. For the past couple of weeks, the ninth grade student government has been selling chocolate bars around the school to raise money for our class and hopefully use the money to buy like class gear. So far, we have raised $713, which is really good because it's our first fundraiser and we still have more chocolate bars to sell. Also, in English classes, the students are writing their final essay based on the book Great Expectations by Charles Dickens. And this was an interesting assignment because the students were given five different prompts and they got to choose which prompt they want to base their essay on. Also, the BYOD is going well. There hasn't been any problems with the wifi or anything and we are still using them a lot in classes. Just last week, in English class, we used the devices to type our essay and it's really helpful. But most of all, we use them in biology because all of our worksheets, labs, and quizzes are online and we use our devices to access them. And all our homework is online, so we would do a worksheet on our device and then we would use Google Drive to share it with our teacher and that's how they would grade it so we would never have to hand anything in. Lastly, in wellness classes, we're doing a new project where we were broken up into different groups and each group was given a court case to present and reenact in front of the class. For example, my group got a DUI case and we played the part of the prosecutors and after we presented it to the class, the class got to act as the jury and decide if the defendant was guilty or not. And it was like a, it was a cool way to learn about a courtroom and how like the law works and everything like that and I found it really helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Thomas. Good job.
You're welcome.
Eric?
Hi. So I'm the sophomore rep and so next year we are planning the prom, our junior prom, and we have a book for May 8th, 2015 at Gillette Stadium, which may seem like a long time away, but it's actually pretty soon. We have to start planning, probably start like most of stuff junior year with the theme and everything and make a prom committee, but for now, we're just doing the contract stuff and making sure all of that's worked out. Another thing we're planning for our class is a class bonding day and that would be in like June till the end and so the senior teachers could kind of be like the chaperones of that. So if students wanted to go to their classes during the day, then they had the option to. But during the day, we're gonna like split up everybody into teams of about 10 kids or so and we're gonna assign the teams because we feel if you pick a team, you're just gonna hang out with your friends and kinda wanna like bring all the kids together. And we're gonna do like different games the whole class and then split up into like make dodgeball in the gym and knockout and then outside, hopefully the weather will be nice by then. You can do like flag football or like three-legged race just to get the kids outside and have a nice day. And then we'll be competing at like afternoon and hopefully have a small little prize, nothing too big, but something to at least work for and then end the day maybe a little ice cream party just to like celebrate ending the school year together. Another fundraiser we're talking about is making school shirts to sell to the whole school, not just our grade. We haven't came up with a design yet, but we're thinking of wanting maybe selling them to the incoming freshmen too so to ease their transition and so they can have some school apparel too when they come as freshmen and that's what we're planning now.
Great. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
I'm Andy, maybe you've heard of me. So just to review, the Medfield High School Theater Society, we recently performed thirty minute Milli. Let me tell you completely unbiased because it's not like I performed a speaking role in it. It was amazing. I hope you all came to see it. And then the Theater Society banquet is scheduled for May 16th where we'll have some fun, some tears, some elections. Now, let me tell you, Erin, prom, it really does sneak up on you. And on that topic, we are working on planning this year's prom. We are getting there. Student government is having a meeting tomorrow and Wednesday and Thursday, prom committee is meeting to work on the centerpieces for the tables. And so I mean, we got like the decorations down and everything else, it'll, it'll all work out. And the juniors and seniors are going on the Spain trip pretty soon. I think Thursday, next Thursday is when we leave. And, no, Wednesday we're leaving from school.
No, we, we leave.
Okay, alright. JJ apparently knows best, so...
Can't edit that out. It's gonna be on the video camera.
We are leaving Wednesday morning and then we fly to Spain, spend a couple nights in Madrid, and then stay with our host families for a year, a week, not a year. That'd be a pretty serious trip. And I, for one, am totally psyched and I'm sure Dennis and JJ are too. And that's really all I have to say.
All three of you guys won?
Yeah.
Good.
Looked at Spain.
I plan on buying a sword. I hope you all have a nice night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, in what may be his final appearance.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think this might be my last school committee meeting, but I really don't know. Maybe. I mean, if there is another one, you, I don't know if you can count on me showing up because I'll probably be asleep and out of school, but I'll talk about the art department. Yeah. I'll talk about the art department as I usually do and it's the only really thing that goes on in my life these days. But last week, we had the AP art, art show in the lobby. We actually just took down the panels today. Every year, the AP art students host their own show aside from the, the school-wide art show just because we have to send our, our AP work to the actual AP board to be graded for the, for the grade. So that was actually up last week and this year, well, we do it every year. We have those little QR codes which you can scan with an iPhone. I think there's an app on both Android and iPhone and it kinda links you to a URL online or on YouTube and it actually is a video of the artist talking about his body of work and they can talk about the concentration or pick up a particular piece just to kind of extrapolate on the certain thought process behind it and things like that. But, so that was last week and it was, it was really fun. The, the artist reception was on Tuesday and we had a good turnout. So it was, it was fun to kind of finally see all the, the work next to each other and up on the walls and be displayed. And then this week, actually this Thursday, the, there's more artwork up in the Zula Gallery. This Thursday, from 6:30 to, or six to 7:30 is the artist reception and every year, they have the jury student faculty exhibit where it's K through 12 and just a variety of all different kinds of media from different works and then also some featured faculty members' work is also displayed. So, and that's always awesome every year. This year, they also are putting some pieces in the library, I believe in the reference room. So that'll be fun. I think it's 93 pieces total. So if you don't have anything to do Thursday night, 6 to 7:30, you should come to the artist reception. I'll be there. But it's also, the Zula Gallery's open Saturdays and Sundays from 12 to 5, just in case you wanna stop by. And then lastly, in National Art Honor Society, we are working on our mural and that's kind of doing its own thing, so hopefully we can finish it before the year ends because that's really my only fear. So yeah, that's kind of what's happening in the art department. And thank you for my past four years as a representative of the school committee. It has been very fun. I know it's probably been tough kind of having to like half laugh at my dry humor, so there it is.
You've been really, it's been, it's great, it's always great to watch everyone kinda get through the four years and the...
It was nice like being able to present laughs this year. That was really like my favorite thing, I don't know why. I think I was first and then every year gets like a little better because it's like, oh, now I'm not first. And then by last year's...
I'm wondering if Andy can really take over for you.
Yeah, I don't know if he can start even to manage.
Big shoes to fill.
Size nine and nine.
I got big things.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Good luck, by the way.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy subcommittee, school committee policy subcommittee. And I think that there are some recommendations on policy changes. Do you wanna walk us through that?
Sure. So I can just actually give each you an email. This came from our attorney, Andy Walk.
So if you remember way back in, I think September, we, we had a discussion about
having Andy review all of our policies. So this just came in this past week and Andy went through all those and has some specific recommendations for us and made some changes. He looked at grammatical changes, pagination, those kinds of things and then gave some real updates to some of the issues, some of the policies that need to be updated with law changes, et cetera, like Corea, all that kind of thing. So I, I think what would be a great way to approach this, if we can have a subcommittee that I could meet with and go through some of these changes and then if the subcommittee agrees with the changes, bring them to the entire committee and we'll vote the changes through. So I'm not sure if we'll get all this done before the end of this school year, but if we establish a subcommittee and maybe tackle some of it and bring some...
Would the, would the subcommittee be dealing with these particular issues, the list memo?
Right, right, exactly.
And so my only question, it doesn't look like it'll be more than one meeting, the sort of, it don't look like there's a lot of, are there anything substantive in these?
Well, I think there's, you know, there's definitely some changes that we need to make in there, but it, it wouldn't be a lot of meetings.
Commitment.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a huge commitment. But I think you'd probably only wanna do a couple of policies per meeting unless you wanted to get into all of them, but I think you need two readings in your policy manual before it becomes different or changed. So I think if we did one, one meeting and one, I don't know if we could do it all in May, June, we could, we could certainly try.
Well, no, you're saying try to do it into next year.
We could, yes.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
But maybe establish a subcommittee, have a meeting or two prior to the end of this school year. If it looks like we can get that done, do that. If not, then we'll carry it to September because this is only...
Is it only half? It's a half meeting?
Not even half. Yeah, so it's a third of the policy. So we still have to send him more. This is only, this is what we...
I'll, I'll...
Oh, I see.
So it took this long just for...
I thought this was all...
No, it's not all.
Oh.
Yeah.
So any volunteers to be part of that subcommittee?
I mean, I think it's going to be probably a two-year process total once it's all all done.
I don't mind if I have it, but I'm trying to... Could it be two of us? Or is this...
Should be two.
Should be two, yeah.
I'll do two.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
So...
Thank you.
Should we take a vote? I think we should probably, create that committee, so a motion to approve Mary Ann and Eileen as members of the sub-policy subcommittee?
Agreed.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll try to schedule something in, end of April, after vacation week?
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
So Doug's here, so that means it's time for another trip.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Hope you're all well. I'm here tonight to ask permission to take the group out of state to a performance opportunity that we have. In Rhode Island, actually in New England, there's really only one venue that is currently hosting a weekly big band and it's sort of an institution that's been live jazz there for 35 years. And I've actually been playing live jazz there for close to 20 years on Monday nights in a couple of different groups. I'm currently in the group that's there on Mondays. And what I've seen over the last couple of years, they've started bringing in Rhode Island high school groups to come in and open for the band, you know, a couple times in the spring as sort of a special concert series that they have. There's been groups from Barrington, there's been some groups from PC, from Rhode Island College as well. It's a really great opportunity for the students to play at a jazz club similar to what we did when we were in China, in Shanghai, or, you know, go to see jazz at a jazz club in New York City, but literally in our backyard. So what I'm asking for is permission for the students to be transported by their parents, who will be in attendance at this concert, to perform from around 7:30 to 9:00, maybe watch a little bit of the John Almark Jazz Orchestra, which I'm part of, and then get home at a reasonable time after that. The date that I asked for was for next Monday night, the 14th. Unfortunately, in the time between we, our initial, my initial conversations with them, they filled up that night with another band. So I have a tentative night for May 19th for the band to go down and perform. Hoping to have your support. It's a great night of music, you're all invited.
How many, how, how big is the band?
The band, our band is 23 students. We're gonna have around 20 parents there.
Wow, that's great. Great opportunity for...
Great opportunity, right.
So, motion to approve the jazz band trip to Providence on the 19th?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So Doug, do you wanna plug? There's a, there's a jazz day on Saturday, I see advertised.
Yes, there's a, actually, we have a world famous saxophonist coming in this Wednesday for our jazz night concert, which is a big, big thing every year. We have all the jazz groups in Medfield perform. It's a great concert, seeing, you know, students at the very beginning stages up through, you know, what they do here at the high school, which is, which is pretty advanced. With, you know, one of the top players in the world on saxophone right now is, makes for some unbelievable chemistry. So that's Wednesday night at 7:00 and we're also doing a fundraiser for our Ellington trip, Jazz Around Town in Medfield will be playing at, we'll be playing at Blue Moon Cafe, thank you, we're playing at Starbucks, we'll be playing at one of the banks in town and so you'll be, if you drive around, you'll see us in a couple of different places playing. Hopefully the weather will be good and we'll be out making some noise.
That's great.
I wanna thank Doug also for appearing at The Power of Music, which was a great fundraiser.
Yes, thank you, that was...
Music Association and Doug MC did a great job, so I wanna thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Good job, thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
What is, how many?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-seven.
Next order of business is the old business, the subcommittee, school committee subcommittee list update. And we do have to, with Debbie no longer on the committee, we have to look at some of these committees and update them. So there's a page, did you guys get the page that's in the material?
Yeah.
Teacher contract negotiations is still the same. Cafeteria contract negotiations, so the three that Debbie was on were the cafeteria contract, custodian, and the secretarial with Eileen. So...
Now, do I just step in?
Well, it would certainly be you. I'm sure your volunteering would be...
Obviously. Should I just sit here?
We were kinda waiting for you to chip in.
Has this started?
Right on cue.
Uh, next week, the first meeting.
You doing...
For the cafeteria?
I began with it.
No.
On what, the cafeteria? Anytime for the cafeteria?
Cap, all the, yeah, all the...
Yeah.
Every other one.
So if, if you would do that, Anna Mae, that would be, I think, a big help.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Eileen's on it, which is a big help, so maybe we'll take a vote to, a motion to appoint Anna Mae as the second member on the negotiation teams for those three contracts?
Agreed.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think that's really the only... That's it.
I think that's it, yeah.
Yeah. Then the next item of business is the superintendent's report to the committee, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item is the FY 15 budget update. We're still in discussion with the Warren Committee and I believe they have a, a meeting tomorrow evening, so I believe they're gonna make their final votes and recommendations on our budget. We'll see what comes out of that and we'll see where we stand. In terms of capital budget, the, the capital budget committee made some recommendations last week on which items to support at town meeting. We had a lot of, had a few items on that. They have, they have supported to replace the Warrior Van and the Warrior Van was given to us by the Council on Aging. It's 11 years old and we had our last inspection in November and they told us they would not give another year inspection based on the frame and the rust and that kind of thing. So it's getting to the point where we don't wanna put our kids in jeopardy and it got the one year pass, but it's time to, to get a new one. Interestingly enough, we used that, I think, 66 times during the school year and saved between $14,000 and $16,000 a year using that van. Because if, if we can't use that van, we have to contract out with Conley. And we have our smaller sports teams and our science Olympiad, those costs would be a lot for our teams and would add on to, especially clubs like the Science Olympiad. So if, if we, if they have a meet in, I think they had one in, in Tewksbury at one point this year. So that'd probably cost $300 back and forth if we had Conley. But we were able to use the Warrior Van, saves money, saves money for the parents, so we're happy about the possibility of replacing that van this year. The data center in, in, in the middle school, there's some issue that's been going on, I guess it's been ongoing, with underpowering of the middle school and it causes some surges in the data center where all of our servers are, so that's an issue. That, they supported upgrading that as well. We have some masonry repairs at Wheelock, so and as you know, brick needs to be repointed and, and et cetera during, during its, its lifetime. And it's about $44,000 worth of repointing and masonry repairs need to be done at Wheelock. They supported that as well. The last one they supported was the resurfacing of our tennis courts at the high school. If you haven't been on them lately, I actually checked them out this week and the cracks are getting bigger. They're, they're, they're more than just a crack in the concrete, they're now about three inches wide in some areas, so it's really a safety issue. If we don't make repairs now, we're gonna lose them. And I know most of our teams play at Metacomet, but still the community still uses the ones by the high school, so it makes sense to do that. We're estimating that's gonna be about $20,000 repair. So we'll see what happens at town meeting. I know there's a finite number for a capital, but those were the, the items that were supported by the, the capital budget committee.
Can you, do you know which ones were?
Yes.
They're all in front of you.
No, I do, I hear. The front entry parking lot restoration at Wheelock, that's a two-phase project with the first phase being about $96,000. The re-tiling in three classrooms in Wheelock, that's about $30,000. That's re, that's taking up the classroom tiles, putting new tiles down, upgraded tiles. The auditorium seat repair replacement at, at the middle school. And that was it. So I think some of these will find their way in the capital plan next year. I mean, if they're important enough to be on now, they're important enough to keep them.
They've been on for twenty-three years.
Yeah. I mean, I bet. So I, I think the, the auditorium's been on for about three years, right? They told me that one's been on for a while. And then...
At least a second time around for the...
Is it?
Park and park.
So I did get a call from MSBA today and they are gonna come and do a site visit at Wheelock to look at our boilers. So we're, we've, we've put all that in and the next phase is a site visit in which they're gonna spend about two hours at Wheelock on May 1st with Principal Facilities Director and me, and they're gonna go through and meet and kinda give us a sense of what they're thinking. So we could be getting that boiler replacement. We're, you know, crossing our fingers on that, but we won't know, I guess probably till the end of May now because they're just coming out May 1st.
Is that, what's the reimbursement on that? Is that 100% or is it...
It's not 100%.
It's the base rate.
Yeah, so it's, I believe it's 30, 39%.
So we need to appropriate some other special process that...
So I think what we have to do is we would incur the cost of the study phase, which I think is probably around $10,000 to $15,000. And then Tim mapped it out actually very nicely for us. Then we'd look at a special town meeting for allocation of the first part of it and then either regular town meeting or another special town meeting to allocate the other piece of it. So in, in conversation with the town, they obviously see the need of it. It's the original ones from 1968, I believe, and they're almost as big as this room. So I think they've gotten their, their life use out of them, but we need to make sure that we can replace those at high efficiency.
Yeah, these are new boilers, they're much more efficient, so they save money on operations and, and you get that half paid for.
Right, right.
So what's the total cost of that project, did you say?
It was gonna be over $300,000 for the two boilers. That's without the reimbursement. So we'll get almost 40% of that back, the town will. I, I think the town views it, and when I brought it to the selectmen, they view it as, same as you folks did, it has to be done at some point. Why not take advantage of this process now and have the state kick back 40% for it? So it makes sense. So I'll let you, I'll keep you in the loop on that one second. Next update is the memorial principal search. Since our last meeting, we, the subcommittee team members, two of which are here, interviewed five candidates. If you remember, we had 46 applicants. The subcommittee got, the search committee, excuse me, got 20 of those applicants. I went through and read it out, some of them that weren't just really good fits for us. They chose six people to interview. One dropped out at that point, so they only interviewed five. And then what they, what they did at that point was to push three to me as finalists. One of the finalists did drop out, so then it went down to two. So since our last meeting, I've interviewed the two finalists, brought them to Memorial for a site visit, and then have taken administrators on site visits to their schools. So I'm at the process right now where I'm doing reference checks. I'm waiting on just two more checks, which I anticipate I'd get tomorrow, hoping to make a decision tomorrow, Wednesday, and we'll let you know as soon as we do that. But this, this search committee was, was great. I mean, they gave us three very viable candidates that, that could walk in and do the position. I think it's, at this point, it's finding the right fit for Medfield and once you go to their site and see the work that they've been doing, you get a really good sense of what that fit was gonna look like. So it was very helpful for the administrative team and for me to, to go on those site visits and I'll, I'll let you know as soon as that happens. I wanna communicate to the staff and the parents simultaneously, so I know if I do one or the other, everyone's gonna know anyway, so we'll send those letters out to folks as soon as I make that decision, but I'm anticipating Wednesday, Thursday.
So by the next school committee, you wouldn't be introducing...
Probably not because of the town meeting one.
Oh, right.
But I think the first one and the one may absolutely, or the person to introduce to.
Great.
And I wanna thank Eileen and Mary Ann for serving on that committee. Appreciate that.
Awesome.
And last item?
District record.
Oh, thank, sorry about that. Didn't have mine for me. So a few things, we had the Special Olympics last Friday. It was outstanding. We had lots of athletes from here participate in the Special Olympics and I think about 15 or so high school students volunteered, which was just wonderful. And lots of teachers there. I spent a good time there. All the administrative team went to root on our athletes. It was just really well done and I wanted to thank Med, Medway for doing such a nice job hosting the Special Olympics this year. Uh, and lots of teachers there, I spent a, a good time there, all the administrative team went to root honor athletes, it was just really well done, and I wanted to thank Med, Med, Med Way for doing such a nice job hosting the Special Olympics this year, it was great. Um, Medfield resident Mark Alkoff, who's from Fox twenty-five, came at the end, he did the MC for the award ceremony, did a great job, and the TV cameras were there and, and filmed that as well, and they showed that on the Friday night news. So it was just a great experience. Uh, Matt Lekov, our Director of People's Services, was involved in the planning of that, did a real nice job, so it was just an exciting day there, and, um, happy for our kids that got to participate. Uh, in terms of the high school, uh, I, I'm gonna announce that, that Heather Mendoza is going to be the new Assistant Principal at the high school. Uh, they did an exhaustive search and came up with some really good candidates, and Kathy, uh, Katie Newns is retiring this year, so she'll be taking that position. We've looked at restructuring just the names of the, uh, deans of, and make them Assistant Principals, trying to, kind of get it up to what most schools are doing right now, so that there'll be Assistant Principal Kelly Campbell at Blake, and then Jeff and Heather will be the Assistant Principals at the high school, so, um-
And they're gonna maintain their responsibility, Jeff will be the-
Same responsibilities, same thing, we're just changing the name, name a little bit. Uh, but, you know, Heather did a really great job during the interview process, and, uh, Robert took a team, did some site visits, and a lot of, um, reference checks on the other candidates. They had a very, very strong pool. So Heather rose above it and, uh, was just an outstanding candidate, and we're very, very happy for her. Also, uh, this week is the Golden Award Ceremony, I think we talked about that at our last meeting, so Matt Vaughn and Melinda Lohem will be getting that award Thursday night. We're actually hosting that Thursday night, so if you are around, please feel free to stop by. It's going to be, uh, six to nine, and we're, we're starting it i- in the cafeteria, then it's gonna move into the auditorium for a panel discussion. So very, very proud of our two folks getting that award this year. Um, we also had the Park, uh, trials this week, uh, last week, excuse me, at the middle school and the high school, and they went very well. Um, so what we, we had a couple of glitches technology-wise, but not as much as other places have had, I think they did a nice job preparing, Owen did a great job making sure everything was all set up perfectly for, um, for our students. Interestingly enough, the districts that had the most difficulty had their, did Park on iPads and not on computers, which is very interesting, because, uh, so many folks, including us, are looking at iPads as far as instructional use, and, uh, for some reason, the software didn't jive well with, with the iPad. So we had our kids do them on PC in the labs, and we had very, very few issues. Uh, we have second grade, excuse me, third grade doing that, uh, coming up in May. Happy third grade teacher in the audience that's gonna be doing that. Only two classes are gonna be doing that in third grade, and, and this is, you know, a great chance for us to not only see what the test looks like, but also give feedback to improve it, so that when, if and when the state does choose to go to this instead of MCAS in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, then we've had our say. Some of the feedback I did get was, one of the glitches that happened at the high school level was that our kids were answering the questions so quickly, that it was, it was, um, logging up the, it was messing up the system for Park, it wa, they weren't used to answers being done so quickly, or it wasn't programmed that way. So our kids took Algebra II in high school, and by all accounts did fairly well, because they were finishing very quickly. So that's something that Park has to do with their techno, their, their technology piece is that they need to make sure that they can adjust for that, and apparently it was set for a certain timeline that we were surpassing, so.
There was a story in the Globe today that I didn't read it, but I saw the, did you see that?
I didn't see it. Was it about Park?
Yeah, and just talking about some of the glitches the towns-
And some of the towns had. It's Owen, um, went on his listserv and, and they, they listed some feedback from other technology directors, and he was telling me this morning some of the, uh, some of the feedback. And then lastly, at Blake, uh, there's, actually, there was a meeting tonight, probably going on right now, for the iPad Initiative for Parents. We got a lot of feedback in the fall from parents saying that, why aren't we doing this in sixth and seventh grade too? So I know that Nat has sent out some information, and we're gonna look to expand this program in sixth and seventh grade next year, because we've had the teacher training, infrastructure's there, and we've had such really good success in the middle school, that we want to give that opportunity to more kids. So I know Nat's having information on that tonight, another one, I think either this week or next week, to kind of get a sense of, um, you know, what parents are thinking on that, and the feedback I've gotten from parents has been very, very positive as well, with upcoming, you know, sixth grade parents and then parents that are in sixth grade going to the seventh grade. They wanted to say, let's just do it, let's just-
Wednesday morning, right?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Wednesday morning.
Is that what it is, Wednesday morning?
So this means that next year, all three grades of the middle school will be part of the iPad Initiative?
Correct.
And then, are we, are we moving ahead another grade at the high school?
We are.
Or are we going all grades at the high school?
No, just one more grade.
So not, ninth and tenth grade?
Ninth and tenth grade next year.
Right.
And essentially what's going to happen, even though it's PYOD at the high school, essentially it's going to get to a point where you're gonna have almost all iPad. It's almost like you're on iPad, because so many are coming up. Uh, but what we're looking at right now is we're trying to see what upper class students are using, upper class with seniors, juniors and seniors, because what we're seeing at the secondary level, in junior, senior, and then in college, is so many kids are using laptops. So we want to try to see how that works, we don't want to have, get into a situation where parents have purchased an iPad for their student, and then all of a sudden, junior year, have to buy another device for their kids. So we're trying to avoid that, um, but we also want to make sure that, that kids get the experience they need and prepare them for college. So if colleges are all using iPads, it's just kind of a dance we need to do in the next couple of years to really figure out exactly how this is going to work for kids that have juniors and seniors going forward. Because if, if parents are gonna buy their children a, a laptop for college, then we need to make sure they get that early, that we can handle that in, in the eleventh and twelfth grade. But so far, so good, as Tom said tonight, um, all those issues we had in the fall have been resolved. And, um, you know, there'll be more issues, but I think we've, we've done a really good job to try to get ahead of some of those issues going forward. Because now, with additional grade levels and more kids, there's additional strain on this, on the network. So we have upgrades planned, uh, for the summertime, which we'll be doing, and then expanding that to elementary as well, so that they have more wireless. Uh, we have one teacher in fifth grade, Mrs. Kyle, who's starting to do a, an iPad pilot with the kids, not the one-to-one like we're doing with the secondary, but just doing more individualized learning with the iPads, so.
And that's grant funded, right?
That's grant funded, it is.
Plus the budget adds the money for the infrastructure upgrades.
That's correct, that's correct. So we, I mean, I think that's what we have talked about, that if, if parents are gonna step up and really buy the device for their kids, then we need to provide the professional development and the infrastructure for the teachers for it to work. I think that's a, that's a fairly, fairly good deal for everyone, because other places are doing everything, you know? So I think that's, that's the only thing we can do, fair thing we can do is provide the PD and the infrastructure. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Have you found that, I just wondered, have you found that teachers across the board that, that there's consistency across the grade levels that are using the iPads? As far as professional development, like that are all the teachers using it, some using it more than others?
I think like everything else, some are using it more than others, but I think the thing that we really need to do is provide that PD for them, so that, um, you know, we can hold everyone accountable, but we need to make sure they understand what they're doing and, and have them not only do the PD, but have a chance to use the iPad. So it's one thing having the PD in isolation and then not using the iPad, we gotta provide both for them, so we, we gotta make sure that we do our part with that. But I think initially, it's different, it's a different way to teach, and if you've been teaching one way for a long time, it's challenging. But I think for the most part, the teachers that, that I've seen and that I'm hearing about have really stepped up and done a nice job of it.
Have we also changed the, the evaluation process, where maybe the principal or whomever is going into the classroom is observing more and trying to get a feel of what the teachers are actually using in class?
Definitely more, absolutely. So there's, there's more walkthrough observations that take place, um, and, and they're required to do that. And I think whether it's-
It's more accountability, or-
Whether it's a ten-minute walkthrough, or if it's a fifteen-minute walkthrough, or thirty-five-minute walkthrough. I mean, principals and content specialists are getting a better sense of what's going on in the classroom because of the evaluation. So we're starting to see that. I think I, I told some of you that I can go on my iPad and click on anyone's name that works here, and I can see every time a principal has been in their room, what the feedback was, and what the response back from the teacher was to, to the principal. So it, it's that, you know, it's that documented now. So it's, it's great. And I think it's been embraced by, by teachers and, and administrators as well.
Great. So, um, we, this is where we talk, people have in school committees, or JJ, do you ever hear?
Don't think so. I know I've said it before, um, but I mean, I see teachers using, um, technology more in, in our grades, even though we don't have our own devices.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I, I mean, that's probably the furthest I can kind of attest to this whole process, but I think it's going well, um, especially teachers who have, um, who teach, you know, who are going to teach ninth grade or teach ninth grade.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely seen some, I think, good changes, so.
Thank you, Anna Mae.
Anna Mae, welcome, by the way, to, uh, school committee.
Uh, Coalition Quarters.
Very stylish.
There we go.
No, I'm having just welcomed to Anna Mae from her very stylish, you're getting reactive.
Yes, that's right.
Close.